All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Monday, August 17th. We'll begin with a salute to the flag. All right. Here we are again, virtual meeting. It's becoming, we're getting used to it now, I guess. Item number one, I guess we'll do a roll call first. Mr. Baraski, can you call the roll?
Sure. Mr. Galloway?
Yeah.
Jeff Baraski here. Mr. Dents?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Let the record show, Mr. Rocco had a family commitment tonight. He wasn't able to make the meeting.
All right. With that, we'll start with item number one, public comment. Kyle, do we have anyone for public comment?
Yes, move in Tony and now.
Okay. Hello, Tony.
Hi, I have a couple of questions, actually about five of them. If Elcon has, I want to know if Elcon has officially pulled their township permit request?
Yes.
And also if Elcon has officially withdrawn their lawsuit against the township?
Yes.
Yes, yes to both? Great. Okay, since US Steel has applied to remediate more land, what's the proposed purpose of that land as far as who's potentially going to buy it and what are they going to use it for?
What land are we speaking of specifically? Mr. Jones, you know anything about this? Are we talking about the Biles Island?
I don't know. There was an article in the ads in the Courier about US Steel applying to remediate land and it's kind of extensive amount of land.
Years ago, they disturbed wetlands and they're required to fix that. And I think that's what they're doing. They're just, it's just waited this long. It's not that they're building anything there. That's just where they want to remediate the land disturbed in the past. Is that correct, Mr. Jones? Does that sound right?
That's correct. We just started a project for wetlands mitigation near Biles Creek. And that's exactly right. They disturbed wetlands at a previous location or a different location. And this is an effort to relocate them, mitigate them is the proper term.
Okay, since Elcon's not going to be building out there, can the township look at adding a prohibition of processing, manufacturing, and otherwise remediating toxic chemicals, materials, and waste in all the commercial and industrial zones in the township? I mean, I understand we would have to grandfather in those chemical companies and other companies that are involved in that somehow now, but so that others don't want to come in and do the same thing like Elcon was going to do. Can we do that?
Um, Mr. Clark?
The, we previously provided you with an analysis on this, Mr. Dents. And I'm aware that you had shared it with Ms. Batiste. The short answer is an outright prohibition like that for banning a particular type of use in a heavy industrial zoned area would not be, would not be permitted.
Okay, so then we would have to look at other alternatives. All right, thank you. One other thing, and that's for the engineer who I believe is here this evening. What about the curbs for Fallington United Methodist Church?
I think last meeting, the board members advised you that that's part of this year's road program. So the contractor during some point during the construction phase will be over and fix the curb inside.
Okay, I just wondered if there was some idea of when?
Yeah. Well, make sure everyone noticed when they're coming in. They're not just going to roll in one day and start ripping it off.
That's correct. And as of now, we haven't had our scheduling meeting, but we're going to do that this week. And Ms. Batiste, I'll have an answer for you sooner than the next meeting. I'll try to get the information out to you as soon as I get.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And Tony, one thing, you know, if you looked at item number four on our agenda tonight, this Petrucci tract, it's a, it's just a building that they're building without a use. We made sure that there is something on the plans and note that requires them that if there's anything that's going to be fumes, vapors, gases, disposal of waste, any operation that needs to get zoning for that, they can't just move that in there if it gets approved tonight at all.
Okay, it would just be nice to have something in zoning that doesn't allow them to do certain things that endanger our water and our air.
Is that it?
That's all I have, but thank you.
All right, have a good night. Kyle, anyone else for a public comment?
No more public comment.
All right, this is item number two, Certificate of Appropriateness, 46 Main Street. Repairs front porch windows, transom windows, installing, and then ground pool. Everyone saw this. Anybody have any questions?
No questions. No questions, Mr. Chairman.
No questions.
All right, it looks like it will be very nice job. Any public comment for this, Kyle?
No public comment, but I want to make you aware, I brought Kathleen in for this. Was this the correct item for her?
Um, I don't know. Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, no questions. Is there a motion then?
A salute.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, Mrs. Mannan, you're good to go. You're muted. You're on mute, but.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, we do it all the time.
Zoom world as well. So we're fine on both fronts, the, the front porch and the pool.
Everything on there, yep.
Okay, great. So I can hop off this?
You can.
Yeah, good luck, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great night. Thanks again.
Me too.
Thank you.
All right, this is the item number three, Certificate of Appropriateness for 109 North Main Street. Adding a rear dormer, vinyl siding, and asphalt shingles. Any questions from board members?
None.
Concerns issued at all?
No questions.
I have none. Kyle, is there any public comment for this item?
No public comment.
All right, another one that's pretty straightforward. We have a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Right, yes, I'd like to second that.
All right, motion made and seconded. Mr. Baraski, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Jeff Baraski, I'm a yes. Jeff Dents?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number four, JG Petrucci tract, preliminary and final land development. We have to give you a minute, Kyle, to move a few people in here for this?
Yes, I have quite a few.
All right.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's moved into the room.
All right.
Good evening, guys. I'm Ed Murphy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Petrucci to speak to item number four, which is a land development plan for a slightly larger than 18 acre parcel owned by Hyosen presently located at Ben Pharaoh's in South Pennsylvania Avenue. We presented the sketch late last year to the staff and have been following up since with the typical review and approval process by submitting land development plans, meeting with your planning commission, having the typical reviews done by Joe's office and, and other consultants in the township. And we're at a point this evening where we think the plans are ready for consideration by the board. We did receive as a courtesy a draft of the approval resolution that your staff had put together and we don't really have any issues with it or with any of the review comments that your consultants have made. And the resolution would be subject to our ongoing compliance with those comments. There were a handful of waivers and I'll defer to Joe Jones if he wants me to touch on them. They're fairly routine, but I'm happy for Joe and I can go through them together if you guys would like. So however, your pleasure.
I think they're pretty straightforward. The only thing I want to note is the comment from the traffic engineer about traffic and the fire marshal.
Right, all of which are conditions and we agree. They would be ongoing conditions of our approval, right?
And the trees as well, right?
Correct. Yep.
All right. So basically, why don't you just tell us for the record and for everybody watching, what exactly we're doing here?
The plans that are in front of you contemplate the construction of an approximate 215,000 square foot warehouse, which would, in addition, would include slightly more than 10,000 square feet of affiliated office. And as you alluded to, Mr. Chairman, early on, we're not intending to do anything. It will be built on spec. It's intended to be a warehouse distribution and processing facility, but nothing with hazardous materials or anything that would, you know, threaten any, you know, the water or anything like that. So it's a fairly straightforward, clean proposed use.
Right. And whoever the tenant is will have to submit a letter of intent anyway.
Right. Yep, yep.
Any questions from board members? Mr. Baraski, questions or comments?
No questions. It's time. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Nothing. I think you guys just hit on a couple of my questions. No, no questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Joe, do you have anything to add or Mr. Clark?
I'll just, nothing to add.
I would add that it's a 225,000 square foot building, I believe, not 215.
Hey, Joe, I think it's, I saw that in the approval resolution. I think it's 215 plus 10 for office, total of 225, not 225 plus 10.
All right, Kyle, do we have any public comment for this?
No public comment currently.
All right, and this is a resolution. Mr. Tequita, what resolution number would this be?
Resolution number 2020-19.
That's 19, all right. All right, do we have a motion then? We have a motion for a resolution number 2020?
I was on mute. I make the motion to approve the resolution.
Yeah, I like to second that motion.
All right, motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Mr. Murphy. That was easy.
Good, it was. Thanks, guys, making, for making it easy. See you soon.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep. Item number five, Airgas amended final approval. Kyle, you moving someone in for this?
Yeah, I have quite a few up bringing right now.
All right, this is something that we've already approved at one point. Mr. Jones, is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. This is an amended plan to relocate slightly one of the internal driveways and to lessen the building coverage. So it's a very straightforward amendment.
Okay, everybody's in the room.
All right, you want to take us through this, Mr. Jones? This is pretty straightforward. You said.
Yes, as I stated earlier, the plan was approved previously. The project is under construction. And during their construction, they realized that due to a change in program, they could relocate a driveway and move it actually further into the site and away from, I believe it's the eastern property line, away from, I guess, the Keystone Nap Building closer to the site. And they didn't have need for the larger maintenance building. And so they removed that from the plan and they provided a smaller office. So it's a less impactful development. This amendment.
Right, looking at the plan, it looks pretty straightforward. Is there, are there any questions from board members? Mr. Baraski?
No, no questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
I have no questions. Mr. Clark or Ms. Gallagher, do you have any questions or issues?
No, none.
All right, and you're good.
I am, I'm sorry, I'm Greg Adelman here on behalf of Airgas. There was one additional request that we had had for the supervisors to consider this evening, and that was to further extend the term of the existing land development agreements that had been signed. I believe they recently expired and we would need them to be renewed as part of the amendment to the final plan approval.
How's that work, Clark?
Just by agreeing to extend the land development approvals. Mr. Adelman, how much time do you think you, are we talking six months, a year?
Let's just go with the standard year as per your regular agreements. And then if we need further extensions, we'll come back before count, before they.
That's all you have to do, Mr. Dents.
Thank you.
All right, does that change anything for anyone? Everyone's still good? Mr. Baraski? Kyle, do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the amended final plan?
I make that motion.
Yeah, I like to second that. And that, that motion gives out your extension on that also?
Yes.
Yes, I'm a yes.
Seconded. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good night, everyone.
Item number six, I lost my agenda. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, number six, copier agreement between the police department and township administration. Mr. Tequita, can you take us through this one?
Yes, the board has asked to be, to consider approval of a copier agreement with Centric. This will replace the Xerox copier contract that we have currently. The copiers that Centric is providing us are fully compatible with all the new programs that we'll be implementing over the course of the next year. It is a 63 month contract and it will be, it was budgeted. And it will be approximately $300 a month less than what we're currently paying.
So we're approving this not to exceed $42,000. Is that correct?
The, the contract is a 63, 63 month contract, so it would be totaling $180,000. But that's over the course of the 63 months.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know what I'm looking at. All right, any questions for Mr. Tequita? Mr. Baraski?
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I got one question. As far as for the police department, is this the, the typical policy for throughout the administration building too? Is this machine any different or is it the same as the technology we're using in an administration side?
Yeah, this contract actually covers all the copiers. It will replace every other police side as well as administration side.
Okay.
It's more than one, it's a, it's multiple. Yes, you know, all right, I have no questions. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
No. Mr. Clark or Ms. Gallagher, do you have anything to add?
No.
All right, so is there a motion to approve this contract for $180,000 with Centric Business Systems?
I make the motion to approve the contract.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Baraski, can you pull the board?
Brian Galloway?
Yes.
Jeff Baraski, yes. Jeff Dents?
Yes.
John Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Item number seven, Consider Stipulations to Settle in Appeal of Manhand Investigations LLC versus Bucks County Board of Assessments. Mr. Clark, do you want to take us through this or Ms. Gallagher?
I'll, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gallagher.
Yeah.
Certainly. From time to time, the, the school district will reach a tentative settlement with some of the property owners for tax assessment appeals. As, as has been the case in the past, the school district does the bulk and the negotiating because of the way the tax dollars are split up. The school district has negotiated with this property owner and has reached the settlement that is in the agreement and it is being recommended or presented to you this evening for approval. Without the township's approval, the settlement cannot go forward. I believe the county has signed up on this one as well.
All right. I don't remember last time we did something like this, Mr. Clark. It's been a while, right?
It's been a while.
Yeah. Any questions, Mr. Baraski?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
I have one for Mr. Clark. Are you okay with this agreement, Mr. Clark?
So you actually have conflict counsel for this one. Mr. Bellingmeyer has reviewed this and approved it.
That's correct. All right.
And as the solicitor for the school district, we think this is a good settlement. And as you know, Mr. Palmer, from sitting on the school board for many years, school district has the greatest percentage of the tax dollars. Usually when they're good with it, everyone else is good with it.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
All right, Kyle, do we have any public comment needed?
No comment.
All right, is there a motion to approve this agreement then?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number eight, Consider Employment Agreement with Richard Dipolito to serve as the Director of Emergency Services and Assistant Township Manager and Fire Marshal. So Rich has been the Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Director as long as I've been here. And he's really, you know, stepped up and helped Matt Tequita since Matt Tequita took over. He's guided us through this COVID thing and, you know, Matt, when he originally was hired, hired as an assistant manager. So Rich is the perfect complement to Matt. Rich has a connection to the community as long as he's been alive that a lot of us don't have, some of us don't have. So, you know, the two of them work great together and this is a great for township. His salary is $130,000, which isn't that much. He's generous enough. And this is going to be a great for everyone. Does anybody have anything else to add, Mr. Baraski?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dents. I'd like to kind of just echo your same, your same statements. I mean, Richie has definitely stepped up. I mean, we didn't have to ask him to, to jump in at all over the last year, you know, if he saw a place in the township where there was a, a need for him to help, without doubt, without a question. I mean, he was there offering his assistance, same for when Matt, you know, when Matt came in, you know, he was right there to offer Matt any, any assistance. So again, you know, I, you know, wholeheartedly believe this is a great decision by the supervisors to promote Rich and I look forward to him in his new position here.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions about it. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo my colleagues with Mr. Dipolito. I know him personally. I think he, you know, is a huge asset with his leadership, community connections and outreach. We're in a great position promoting him up for the whole entire community and our, our township offices. We're lucky to have him. I'd like to congratulate him and can't wait to vote on it.
I don't think it lets you, Mr. Palmer. Do you know that?
No, no. Yeah, he wants, he won't sign my paycheck, right? Yeah.
Any public comment needed, Kyle?
No public comment.
All right, with that, is there a motion to approve Richard Dipolito's employment agreement?
I make the motion to approve. I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Congratulations, Richard Dipolito. He's not on here tonight. I don't know why. Item number nine, Consider Recommendation from the Police Pension Committee for Chief Wilcox. Bill Wilcox was in a serious car accident about 10 years ago or so. And since then, he's been suffering with hearing loss and it's just progressively gotten worse and worse for Bill. And, you know, the Police Pension Board a couple of months ago put him out on a disability pension. This has to be approved by the board of supervisors, correct, Mike?
That is correct. The Pension Board is simply a recommendation. It's up to the Board of Supervisors to make this decision.
Right, and this was, um, yeah. So are there any questions from board members? Mr. Baraski?
Not at this time.
Mr. Palmer?
No comment.
And Mr. Galloway, he already voted on it once, right?
Yeah, I was on the Pension Board myself, so no questions.
All right, is there any public comment needed for this, Kyle?
No public comment for this.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the recommendation from the Police Pension Board for Chief Wilcox's pension?
I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Mr. Baraski, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Baraski, yes. Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That takes us up to minutes from July 20th. Any corrections, questions about the minutes from anyone? Excellent, and this is always Mrs. Paul, and I know it's got to be tough doing it this way. Mr. Boraski, any questions? Everyone's good?
No question.
No questions, Chairman.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I make that motion.
I cannot, um, I'm going to abstain from this because I missed the last, uh, meeting, so.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
A motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
I abstain.
That takes us to the bill list. Bill lists tonight from board members. $1,196,000, one over, 1,000, 1,196,501, it extends to. Any questions or comments from board, Mr. Boraski?
No questions. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
Galloway?
No questions.
Right. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
I make that motion.
All right.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Boraski, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski, yes. Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to executive session. Lauren, do you, Ms. Gallagher, I'm sorry, do you want to comment on the executive session?
Certainly. The board did meet in executive session this evening to discuss several items of personnel.
All right. That takes us to the, um, police report. And I have a prepared report from Chief Wilcox. Corporal Nick Pinto, Officer Ryan Murphy, and Alex Sansone saved a boy from drowning at the Falls Township Community Park. Corporal Pinto located the child and pulled him to the top, and Officer Sansone got him to the store line. With assistance of Officer Murphy, the child was rushed to the waiting ambulance. Corporal Pinto, Sansone, and Murphy performed CPR, rescue breathing, and suctioning on the way to the hospital until they arrived in ER where the staff took over. The child was transferred to another hospital for treatment. With the, uh, okay, with the board of supervisors' approval of Carfax, accident reports can now be obtained online through crashdocs.org. That info will be on the website. Residents will pay $10. Non-residents and insurance companies will pay $15. There is also an investigative feature through Carfax that our officers will have access to. The website to obtain reports is on the Falls Township Police website and on Crime Watch. Although we were unable to continue with our chief for a day program with the school closures, remaining students who were not able to participate received a visit from the chief who presented them with a certificate and some special gifts. All right. The recent storms that came through the area caused no major damage to any business or residents, but he would like to remind everyone that during these storms when the traffic lights are not functioning, to please remain patient and drive with caution. We also remind residents that if a flash flood warning is issued, please remain off the roads. All right. We are very appreciative of the continued support from our residents and businesses who have provided lunches for our officers since the pandemic. Our department continues to follow all social distancing guidelines in accordance with Governor Wolf's recommendations. And our officers remain healthy and are following the pilot policies and the township is adapted. On a final note, I thank the board of supervisors for their supportive years and I'm proud to say that Falls Township is a wonderful community. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve this community for 48 years and serving the last 14 years as the chief of police. And that's the police report. Any, uh, questions on the police report?
Uh, just one thing. It, I hope you have the opportunity in the future to have him at a, at a live meeting.
We have to.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff, I do have a public comment in regards to police. They wanted to make a remark.
Uh, okay. Who is it?
Her name is Seema. I'll bring her in right now.
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Seema Kazmi, uh, Penns Grant neighborhood. Thank you, Falls Township Supervisors. Um, I know this is old news, but I want to acknowledge and congratulate everybody, uh, because Elcon withdrew their application from Falls Township to building Falls Township, so I wanted to acknowledge everyone and, and express my gratitude. Secondly, I wanted to acknowledge Lieutenant Whitney. Uh, last week, I had participated in a forum with community and police, uh, relations. It was sponsored by the Peace Center and the NAACP, and I wanted to acknowledge that there were a number of Falls Townships, uh, superv, excuse me, police officers that participated. And I was really pleased, and I believe, um, Lieutenant Whitney also participated as well. So thank you to, to Lieutenant Whitney and all the officers that participated and took the time to speak to those of us in the community.
All right. Thank you very much. Is that it?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Uh, is that it, Kyle?
Yes, that's all for public comment tonight.
All right. I somehow got ahead of ourselves.
Mm-hmm.
And skip item 11, the engineer's report. So where's Jones at? You didn't get off that easy, Joe. I have to back up.
No worries, Mr. Chairman. I was, I was holding out till the end. Um, please of the board, you have, uh, the month of engineer, uh, the July engineers report in front of you. As usual, the, uh, highlights are in red. Um, briefly, there were two new land developments submitted, one of which, uh, you adjudicated tonight, Airgas, the second of which is Hensbury School District. That's a minor building addition to their administrative facility, um, on Yardley Avenue. Um, there were four earth disturbances submitted. Again, one for Hensbury School District Administrative Building. That was for 10 parking spaces. Um, added on to the Loop Road. Um, the three are residential pools, uh, along with that one, and we had one new cell tower submitted. In terms of the updates on the land developments, um, I will report that MM Metals is a project that, uh, recently received board approval, and that is now able to go under construction. We had our pre-construction meeting last week. Um, the stalwart Morrisville project was heard by the planning commission last month. We spoke about Airgas, Empire Sunshine Paper will be for, will be before the board of supervisors in September. And the Hensbury School District Building Addition will likely be for, be before the planning commission next week. In terms of the earth disturbances, the Newport Village Apartments project is finally complete. They had, we were waiting for one light to be, um, installed. That was installed. Um, the Dollar General is functioning well. That's been an ongoing drainage problem. Um, but due to the recent remedial work, it appears, fingers crossed, that the remedial work is working. We had a couple of big storms and it's functioning properly. Um, the remaining, uh, red item, um, earth disturbances have all been approved, uh, this month, the, the three pools and the, and the Hensbury School District parking. In terms of the ongoing township projects, um, the road program is underway. We have drainage improvements being installed on Simons and Gilbert. There's been a little bit of a delay on Simons due to some utility conflicts, but we're resolving them with utility companies. There was a couple of residential complaints that we've addressed as well, so we're keeping that, uh, under tight watch while we, um, do more work on Gilbert. Um, as I said earlier to Mrs. Batista, um, it's been hard coordinating our weekly, um, update meetings due to COVID-19 and, and restrictions, but we're going to have them underway this week, so I'll, I'll be able to deliver better updates in terms of scheduling from here forward. And, and as soon as we know their scheduling, we'll get that information out to the residents. Other than that, we submitted our driveway widening letters to all the residents and they've been coming in, um, little at a time for, for those residents who wish to have their driveways widened. Um, the 2021 through 23 road program is in the same stage it was. We're advancing preliminary design work, waiting for the survey work to come in, which I understand is ongoing as we speak. Those are my updates. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any questions for Mr. Jones, Mr. Boraski?
No questions. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Galloway?
No questions.
Mr. Palmer?
No questions.
I have no questions. Uh, I guess, is there a motion to accept the engineer's report?
So moved.
All right. I'll second it.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes us to, I'm back on track now. Police report manager comment, item 15, Mr. Tequita.
Uh, I have two items for you tonight. Uh, the first one is a resolution. It'd be resolution 2020-21. Uh, the board is being asked to consider a resolution extending the guidelines and policies for outdoor sales of food and merchandise for existing businesses during the coronavirus pandemic. This would be until Oc- October 31st.
Okay. Um, yeah, that's a no-brainer for me. Any questions from board members or concerns?
None. Uh, nothing for me. I, I said it before we started this. I mean, it's the least we could do to help the business owners of Falls Township. Um, whatever they need, and, and this is a great opportunity for us to help them.
Is there a motion to approve this resolution then?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tequita.
And the last item I have for you is, um, there's a request for a letter of credit reduction for LTL Color Compounders, uh, American. I had 20 Progress Drive. The reduction amount is $61,148.25. Uh, this work was inspected, um, and is completed to the satisfaction of Jones Engineering.
All right. Any questions from board members?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. All right. Is there a motion to approve the escrow release?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Boraski, can you pull the board?
Mr. Galloway?
Yes.
Mr. Boraski, yes. Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Thank you.
That takes us to board comment. Um, Mr. Palmer?
Uh, no comment at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Boraski, uh, Mr. Galloway, I'm sorry.
No comment.
Mr. Boraski?
Uh, just one thing, Mr. Dents. I just wanted to comment. Um, I know we have, uh, most employees, I think, if not all employees, uh, back in the building now, and uh, things have been quiet. Um, haven't heard much from Mr. Tequita, so, uh, uh, you know, I'm taking it as a good sign and I did just want to, you know, thank everybody for transitioning back into, uh, back into the building. I know it's probably been tough and, uh, you know, just got to take the precautions as necessary. Uh, that was all I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm just going to echo what Mr. Boraski said. It has been a struggle for us. Uh, we had a couple, um, employees test positive. Um, you know, everybody got ahead of it, Mr. Tequita and Mr. Dipolito and Lieutenant Whitney, um, all working together, and we handled it, they handled it very well. And got under control fast. They had a plan ready that they put in place. And, uh, I, I believe everybody, like Mr. Boraski, everybody's back to work now. They are, you know, cleared to work. Um, it's still tough for everybody out there. I mean, everything's changing constantly. I know, uh, the school board, they have it really tough. Uh, I'm lucky. I don't have any young kids in the school anymore, but if you do, I know it's a struggle right now with what's going on. I hear it all the time. Everybody, you know, just be considerate with all the businesses. I mean, they're doing the best they can. Restaurants are doing the best they can. And keep, you know, doing your best to keep shopping in Falls. There's plenty of businesses right here in our community. Restaurants, you know, support them as best you can. They're doing the best they can and stay afloat. Uh, the rules have been pretty much the same now for a couple of months, I think, or at least, uh, it seems like it. They were changing back and forth for a while there. And hopefully we can get back to normal soon and actually have a meeting. Uh, Mr. Bill Wilcox, you know, he had a statement tonight. He's done working in the township September 1st, but he doesn't retire till the end of the year. At some point, we will have him in and recognize him. Um, I really don't want to do it by way of Zoom unless something really bad comes down and me in the paddling to it, but at some point, we will see him then. And then September 1st, uh, Lieutenant Whitney will be our acting chief. That's coming up in 14 days. So with that, that's all I have. Everyone just stay safe. And, uh, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody.
All right. You guys are clear.
Clear? All right. Be good, guys.